Call me if you want to start to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lanceford.
Aye.
Any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I have no changes to the order of the agenda.
We have no formal council recommendation this evening. We move to public comment. Anyone who would like to address the council step up to the voting and state your name. And we'll move to presentations from ComEd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I know most of you, my name is Jeff Ettrick. I'm ComEd's external affairs manager. I work out of the local office most of the time. But I'd like to introduce a Streeter native, actually. Craig Premian is here to talk about the smart meters we're going to start installing. Craig is now the director of operations up out of our north region. But a lot of you recognize him as Streeter born, so Craig Premian.
I'm an older neighbor.
That's right. As we're really proud of ComEd, we go into every single municipality in our service territory, Mississippi River, state line, Kanke Key, everywhere. So I've been on the circuit for the last several years. And while I did transition into my new job, I said, "No, I've done way too many of these, not the new Streeter." I've been going over. And graciously, they let me do that. So with that, I said, "We want to just get out and get our story in front of people." So previously, for the last several five years, I worked on the smart meter deployment project. I was the director of the project. Project is nearing completion. We're starting to wrap it down. So a new opportunity came up. But with that, though, we really want to tell the story because the smart meter project came along. And I begged to get on it because you hear a lot of things. People talk about the mythical win-win, I call it, right? And usually, there's a winner and a loser. That win-win, you really wait to see it. Smart meters really were that win-win. And so I begged to get on the project. I was fortunate to get on it because it really is great for our customers. It's great for our company. It's great for the environment. You know, really, it is a fantastic project. And then the nice thing about ComEd is our project got hung up in some legislation for a lot of years. For a little bit. And we were able to do a lot of benchmarking with utilities across the country. And I think that we put together really best program, smart meter deployment program in the country. So we're quite proud, very proud. So with this, being an engineer and this being my baby, I could talk all night about this. Unfortunately, I found is most people don't want to hear me talk about it all night. So what I'll do is I'll give some overviews and things I think that people like to hear. And I'll stop until you guys ask questions and we can go from there. So why are we doing it? So this business case for us, let's just take costs out of our operation, lower our rate requirement. How does it do that? Obviously, we have over 500 meter meters. And I think we can all agree to pay people to come to your house every day or every month, read the meter, that whole billing. There's no intrinsic value add to the customer for that. Now, if I said, "I'm going to take that guy and I'm going to teach him how to fix cables and poles, you're going to have a more reliable system," we'd say, "Hey, that money spent is money spent well." So we see it's a way of taking an operating cost that really doesn't provide an intrinsic value, turning in something produces that. So the cost there, there's also bad debt costs that the smart meters allow us to reduce. Theft, another item that allows us to reduce. The data coming off the meters, we've been able to greatly reduce our debt. And as you guys are probably well aware of, how that works is that if people are stealing from the company, so forth, that money gets socialized back to the good paid customers at the end of the day. And so certainly beneficial to all of us as customers. Unaccounted for energy is another item that big cost savings. And again, going through these things is these are things that are taking costs out of our business, which allows us to keep our rates lower. As opposed to, "This is a great item. I need you, the customer, to do something to realize the benefit for you." So these items, no action on the customer. This is just going to happen. There are actions that you can take to save money. Peak time savings program. So this meter enables, you decide out for a peak time savings program. It costs no money, so no cost to sign up. And basically, what it allows us to do is turn your usage on really hot days when the price of power is extremely high in the open market. You'll reduce your usage a little bit. You don't have to eliminate it, but reduce it a little bit. And we can track that and give you a credit back and you can save money. Now, that peak savings day, the alert goes out, and you decide you want to use more money than you typically use in that day, no penalty, zero penalty. So no risk, no cost for you to do, only opportunity to save. It also enables a real type of pricing opportunities. So external marketers can come in and sell you the energy portion of your bill. And if they can craft you in other markets where the price of power is a lot higher than Illinois, like Texas, you'll see energy marketers come in and say, "Hey, like phone deals, I'll give you free weekends and holidays if you sign onto this plan," so forth. The meters enable that. So a lot of benefits there. Other benefits for us is operationally. Storms, everybody's been without power at some point. And as you guys know, the big list of people out of power, there's only so many crews that restore power. So efficiently using them crews helps us all. And these meters allow us to know when the meters have been restored. And we've been able to, we're not complete with our rollout yet, but already we've saved tens of thousands of weighted truck rolls. So essentially, we start restoring customers. We think we've restored the majority of these areas. We still have ones where it appears that customers are out of power. What do we have to do? We have to send a truck out there to go fix that power, right? We can't just say, "Hey, hope they're back on." Think they're back on. And obviously, that truck rolling and all these things, when they get there and they say, "Okay, on arrival, no work to be done here. They were already on." That is a big benefit to us in restoration. Now we can just direct that truck right to where the allowances are. So a lot of benefits come from the program. We'll move on to some of the concerns that people have. So part of the way we want to get out in front of our customers is also just, you know, tell them the facts and get in front of any concerns that people have. So one of them is health, right? Meters are dangerous to my health. If that concern comes up, I want to get in front of it. There's nothing space age about this technology as radio. And simple radio has been around for a long, long time. It's an extremely low-power radio, less than one watt, less than a watt, so that it can operate in the unlicensed spectrum, which makes it really cost-effective for us. So low watt, very cheap, unlicensed spectrum. So typical, like a cellphone, thousand times more RF from a cellphone than a smart meter. Thousand times. So order of magnitude, same thing, walkie-talkies we've got in our homes. The same thing, the meters, they communicate for, on average, maybe five minutes a day total. So not something that operates for long durations, low power, no health concerns. We're not, ComEd's not out on some cutting edge. You know, with this technology, entire state of California has smart meters, entire state of Texas, Florida, two-year-olds, Florida, they're global. So this technology is pretty ubiquitous across the world at this point. So the other thing is privacy. It's day and age, we're all worried about privacy, right? As far as the meter itself, we don't have any personal identifying information on that meter. The only thing that's getting sent through the airwaves is your usage data. And the only time it gets married up with any of your personal data is after it gets back through all our head-end systems, firewall systems, and it's into our billing system. So that's the only place that it is. Even with that, we take great lengths to perfect that stream of data, your usage data. The encryption technology that we use is comparable to what's used in ATMs and is used by the Department of Defense. So security is we run the grid. It's Power Mock Ducts, is the grid we will take. So privacy, some things, we get a great, you know, client for that, we're very comfortable with. Selling your data, we're not going to sell your data, your personal data. We're working on enabling, if you want to, enable your usage data to go to a marketer. It's going to give you some great deal. We're working with what's the right way to enable that. But we are not going to give your individual data away. So that's something not going to happen. Some other concerns is the install. What's going to happen? Do I have to pay money, so forth? There's no fee. You're not going to be charged. Walk up to the door, somebody's going to ask you for $10. That's not us. You're not going to get that. The total install is going to take maybe 10 minutes. Most of that's going to be our attempt to knock on the door, just alert you, we're here, what we're doing. The technicians will have an information pamphlet with them. When they go back to the meter, they don't need access to anything in your house, your circuit breaker panel, not at all. They just need to get to the meter. So if your meter's outside, they have access to the meter. If you go back there, possibly you'll be out of power for a minute, depending on what type of in-ersons you have. Majority of them can be jumpered out, which means that you will not lose power during the install. So if it has the jumper horns, we will do that. If it doesn't, you'll lose power for less than a minute. Total install, 10 minutes, start to finish. The installers that we're going to have doing this is Correx. So it's the name of the contractor doing it. They're all going to have a white vehicle, like the one pictured here. It's a Correx. And then it has a ComEd contractor logo on it. So very distinguishable. Somebody pulls up and, "Oh, God, pickup truck man, great, whatever." They're only going to show up with this. The gentleman will be dressed like I've got in the picture here. And we'll have a field badge on, which will say ComEd Contractor on it. So that's a little bit about the install process itself. With that, can we just stop and at this point ask, if you guys have questions, any other dimension that you'd like to hear about?
Craig, there's 13,700 people who aren't in this room in Streeter. So we really appreciate your being here. But what is ComEd going to be doing going forward to get the word out to everybody else about these really important points that you brought up?
So we have really, there's four points of, we have to do a mailer, a bill insert, and then a direct letter to pre-install. And then a week before, we do a blast phone call. So you'll get the bill insert, the mailer, the letter prior to install. You get the blast phone call. You'll also get a door hanger that can be installed, have information on it. We encourage everybody to go to our website, which then you can look in detail on the peak time savings program, other dimensions of the program that I referenced, as well as if you want more information on RF. So I briefly mentioned RF, which we really don't see as a concern. But you don't have to take our word for it. We do there is link you to very credible sites that, you know, there are experts out there that study it, all the data we feel is on the right side of right. Don't trust what we say. Go to all the experts. They're out there. We'll link you to it. So then we try to get people to the website. So those are, other than that, let's get.
If I could add, we are also purchasing half-page ads, I believe, five times in the local newspaper, excuse me, to make sure the message goes out for the newspapers, knowing that not everybody reads newspapers anymore these days. We are purchasing a couple of billboards to put our message up on the billboards. And we are having what we call street teams, which are individuals that will hand out materials to people in town. And we're looking for events, as we talked about, possibly the Labor Day car show. And that way, we would be able to hit, you know, the residents. It would not only be Streeter residents, we understand, because it draws, you know, 20,000 people from all over. But we are going to be doing the meters in the whole Streeter district. So we want to be able to get our message out with street teams, too.
And the local radio station is here. It's been helpful to you.
Yes.
Will this be residential and commercial at the same time?
Yes, it will.
And when is the project scheduled to begin in Streeter?
September 20th. And then it would finish up at the end of October. So a pretty short period, in-house, done.
Jeff, you may want to get ahold of Jack to have him put up the blast.
Yes, we have a chamber meeting next Wednesday morning. So I'm going to get on their agenda to talk about it, too.
Any other question?
Now, I've been trying to, twice, by ComEd, as a person, person, for events and working these out.
Yep. So again, we're trying to.
He feels the same guy.
Could be.
Get our message out to a lot of different venues and so forth, make people very comfortable aware of what we're doing, why, and what the benefits are for them. So lastly, just like to thank everyone. I know your kind is valuable. We do appreciate you guys allowing us to come here and tell our story. So thank you.
Can I could make one other offer? If you guys think of a question, if you're like me, all of a sudden at 10:30, you'll be saying, "Why didn't I ask that?" You know, just get ahold of me and, you know, we'll get an answer back to you.
Thank you. Is there some information that you can leave here at City Hall? Because a lot of people will come in, pay their bills.
I will break down some information similar to what I sent you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to do business?
Attorney counsel, items one and two are really the same item. So it's my request that you vote, motion to receive and file recommendation of the planning commission for property on Gulf, not Gold Road. And then the ordinance that changes the rezoning is the second item. Jeremy can give some additional background.
Thank you. Last week at the planning commission meeting, the planning commission reviewed the request from Wayne Fieldman to rezone the property. If you've been on Gulf Road, it's a property that was cleared out several months ago now, just to the west of Bridger Street. So there's some property back there owned by Mr. Fieldman. He's requesting to rezone it to R3 multifamily residential to allow, basically, he's looking for multifamily condos, duplexes on that property for a 55 and over senior development. So the planning commission reviewed the material, unanimously recommended approval of the change in zoning. Mr. Fieldman will be coming back with a revised plan at next month's planning commission meeting. They will show the layout of those condos.
Thank you. I'll take that and want to entertain a motion, place on file the planning commission recommendation 2017-15 to approve and amend the district zoning map for property on Gulf Road, for the Gulf Road Villa Development. Motion placed.
Second. First over.
Just for a second. Any other discussion? How many are the planning?
When he comes back with the revised plan, initially, he was in the neighborhood of 26 to 30. He thinks he's going to basically plant a smaller number of those, probably in the 12 to 15 range of phase one. I also would feel the mention, the recommendation from the planning commission has a one-year timeframe. And basically, they're saying that if a development is, if a single unit is not complete within one year, they would, this zoning actually wouldn't have taken effect. It would stay a single family. So Mr. Fieldman has one year to complete from the date of your approval.
Any other questions?
Once he break grounds, is that out of your...
No, he would like to break ground. Yeah, he has one year to complete. He'd like to break ground.
He'll start, yeah, this year.
This year.
I don't know how many units he'll have done. But effectively, what he's, the reason why the plan and the plan are coming back to you is he wanted to make some additional revisions, isn't because the use is going to change, but because I think he wants to build it in two phases. The first phase being the properties that front on Gulf Road. And then if that's successful, then he would do the back of these.
Any other questions? Clerk call roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lanceford.
Aye.
Item two, to entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance 2017-15 to approve and authorize the rezoning and amending the district zoning map for property on Gulf Road, for the Gulf Road Village Development, as recommended by the planning commission. Your second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk call roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lanceford.
Aye.
Item three.
Attorney counsel, item three is a resolution authorizing radio system upgrades for the squad cars and flows directly from your consideration of the revised police department capital budget at our last council study session. Chief, I think you should mention again why we're making this change. Now, basically, we're just replacing equipment that is outdated.
This is not replacing equipment out of, since it's out of date. Since we regionalized our dispatch center with the folks of Livingston County House, all become, since that regionalization, we've had to do a new radio system. And after the inception of that radio system being used down here, we started getting information from our office throughout on the streets that in certain buildings in town, due to their makeup, the walls, a certain type of glass in buildings, the radio transmission, reception, and there was nearly nothing. There were dead zones. We began doing some testing and working with our vendors, appropriate communications. We tested with the fire department and found that in fact, yes, there are dead zones. We tested two types of repeaters. One was a more expensive system and found that the less expensive system worked just as good. It's not going to be 100% foolproof, but in the high school, for instance, inside the OSF building, we have thick concrete walls. This does get the signal back out to the repeater in the squad cars. And we put and installed in each squad car, which gets enough to empower down to dispatch. So in essence, it's a safety issue for our officers. It's a safety issue for the people and the citizens who serve in this town.
This is not an increase to the budget. It's just a shift in.
I discussed it at the study session. We're rearranging capital items and postponing one vehicle purchase in order to do this and some other capital items that we felt were important to the end that you discussed at that study session.
Intervene a motion to approve the resolution to upgrade the radio systems in police department squad cars.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk call roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lanceford.
Aye.
Item four.
Attorney counsel, we are coming up on the two-year anniversary of the lease of the Armory to Streeter Incubator LLC and the two-year anniversary of when the state of Illinois transferred the ownership of that building to the city of Streeter. The Streeter Incubator LLC has pretty much handled most of the operation, they've handled all the operations. All the city has done down there is we insured against catastrophic loss. We filed the snow and cut the grass and a couple of other major issues, like some improvements to the boiler. Other than that, everything has been handled by Streeter Incubator LLC today. They refinished the floors. They fixed the water softener. They made several thousand dollars worth of improvements to the kitchen so that would meet the requirements of the LaSalle County Health Department. They could Wi-Fi in. And so they, you know, dollar a year leasing, and they have taken that over and operated it both as a business incubator and as a community center. The only glitch in this system, which this action before you will correct, is that because the Streeter Incubator LLC is a for-profit corporation rather than a not-for-profit corporation, unbeknownst to us, that knocked us out of eligibility for Economic Development Administration funding, which they have a program specifically for incubators like ours here in Streeter. So what this does is it corrects that defect by, instead of leasing this to Streeter Incubator LLC, you will lease it to the Streeter Community Development Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, who will then turn around and outsource the operations and maintenance of the facility to Streeter Incubator LLC. So this will make no difference in what the average user and tenant that the incubator sees. It'll correct that defect so that we can now pursue grants with the Economic Development Administration. It'll do one other thing, and that is it will separate the responsibility for the capital drive or making other capital improvements and maybe enlisting people who might want to donate to that. That function's separate from the operations and maintenance. And so by having a 501(c)(3) entity that people could donate to in the event that they wanted to help us match grant funding for improving the air conditioning or improving parking or whatever other capital improvements that the city would choose to authorize, then that's a separate entity with a tax exempt number from the operations, which is, as the title would indicate, primarily just concerned about operations and maintenance of the incubator. By way of full disclosure, I need to tell you that I have taken a personal interest in getting the Community Development Foundation launched, because I think that our community needs something like this for a lot of other reasons besides just this. Because oftentimes, there are grants that the granting agency wants a Community Development Foundation for rather than just dealing with the city. Like that happens more and more. And so in the interest of full disclosure, I need to mention to you that I serve as the secretary of the Community Development Foundation. But it's recommended that we do this because it fixes this problem.
Intervene a motion to approve the leasing agreements for the Streeter Incubator LLC and the Streeter Community Development Foundation, only the Streeter. For a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk call roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lanceford.
Aye.
Item five.
Attorney counsel, item five, assuming a simple little item with only five words, has a fairly large introduction. And regrettably, it starts with the fact that the state of Illinois' unfunded pension liability is now close to $150 billion. And there is absolutely no plan in place by any entity to fix that. That's the state's unfunded liability. The collective local government unfunded liability is about $50 billion throughout the state of all different types of employee groups, of which the largest is police and fire. Here in Streeter, we spend 55% already of our property tax levy for pensions, not just police and fire, but all pension and retirement obligations. There are some cities in Illinois that are spending 100% of their property tax levies. And we spend 31% of our general government expenses just for pensions and insurance and workers' comp. That doesn't even include payroll at all. What these trends indicate is that personnel costs are taking a larger and larger bite by percentage out of the city's annual budget. And on the current trajectory that we have here in Streeter, it will, it will cause us, if not corrected in some way, cause us to reverse the city council's efforts over the last several years to rein in and lower property taxes. This is not any employee's fault. It's simply a situation that has occurred over many years. And the state is, and I will say this without reservation, the state is not going to bail us out because their problems are three times the size of local governments. And so it is my recommendation, in planning for the financial health of the city going forward, that we have to come up with, that we have to do those things that is, that are within our power to keep from going over a financial cliff. So every time we have a vacant full-time position, we have been and will continue to evaluate whether it can or should be. And it's certainly not true in all cases, but in some cases, it can be outsourced or transitioned to part-time, or we can enter into joint service agreements with other governments to reduce those pension costs, because it will always cost us more to hire full-timers than it is to outsource or use part-timers or enter into joint service agreements. And so over the last two years, we've outsourced 911. We've outsourced the chief financial officer. We've outsourced building inspections. We've gone to part-time in City Hall. And it is now time to apply some same thinking to our largest department, which is the police department. And so it's my recommendation that we adopt an ordinance that allows us to hire part-time officers. It will in no way affect anybody who's currently working for us. The change will happen over a long time by attrition. And it will not in any way reduce the five persons per shift on the police department that we currently have in place. So it doesn't affect many. It is one of those corrections that we can make now, because it results in simply putting fewer people and fewer obligations into the long-term pension obligation, which is unfunded. This enables us to not make it any worse over time. not make it any worse over, over time, and by doing it early enough, I think we can not face the more harsh realities that I think some other cities are headed towards.
And entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2017-16 approving part-time police officers in the city of Streeter, so, your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Your Honor, I have my own opinion, but I truly believe this is not the road we want to go down, but, by, by hiring part-time people, they do not pay into the fund, so in fact, you're taking money away from the fund. 23-year-old kid that's out of, person out of, in the academy, does not have any idea where anything in Streeter is, it takes, we do training with our new guys in fire station all the time on roads, now you're going to put a person from out of town in a squad car, patrol our streets, I, I see this as a major problem, only for the safety of the community, but for the safety of our home officers, I see later on the agenda, we have an SRO, I think if you wanted to use a part-time officer, I would rather see it used in a high school where you can learn always, instead of the roads, I, I just feel this is not a good, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a way to fix the problem, we have major problems of heroin and other things in this community, and this is not going to help the issue, so that's all I would say.
Any other comments? Clark, call roll, please.
Beady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
No.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item six?
Mayor, item six is a part of the city's street program at 12th Street, I'll let Jeremy explain what a cave seal is.
Casey, basically, if you remember, two years ago, in the summer of 2015, we did Airport Road, Livingston Road, South Illinois, cave seal is basically, the first, first pass will be your typical oil and chip, so you're familiar with that, and on the rural routes, they'll do oil and chip, followed a week later by a micro-surface slurry seal, so if you drive out along Chavenna Street, North Chavenna, up by Crafty, that's what was done there, it's a, it's a thin layer of asphalt that will seal the oil and chip and prevent any dust removal like that, we're going to do our best to minimize the dust along 12th for that week, and there will be some disruption, but the plan is to have it done before, the contractor states it's done before December 1st, it'll likely be done by October 15th, so, it's the same contractor that we used in 2015, and the project came in right at, as you're suggesting, a little less, so.
Thank you. And then a motion to award and approve a contract to AC Payment Striping Company, Elgin Elementary, for general revenue, roadway projects, general revenue, street improvement, section 17, Cape, 12th Street. Any other discussion? Clark, call roll, please.
Beady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item seven?
Mayor Council, item seven is a program for school resource officer program, putting an officer in the schools, the intent of this program is to be more proactive rather than reactive, by preventing, at this stage, at the junior high school or at the high school, incidents that would become reactive law enforcement matters, I think we can make a, make a better impact and probably catch people who might be making mistakes that would damage them for their whole lives, and so, SRO programs have been very successful in, in other communities, I will say however, that my experience with SRO programs in other communities has taught me that the program will succeed or fail based on the, on the person assigned to it, someone who really has a passion and an interest in these kids, and being there in all the different ways that they serve the schools and the students and the faculty, and so what that means is, that the person who will be our SRO officer here in Streeter is likely to come from the ranks of the current Police Department, as a known quantity, and the IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, provides that that decision will be made jointly by the police chief, as well as by the management of the school districts, so that we all feel comfortable with that person, because having the right person is so important, even though it'll be a three-way decision, once the decision is made, the person is, is accountable to the police chief, not to the superintendent, they may give notice to the superintendent, but ultimately, they, they answer to the, to the Police Department management, because they are a full-time employee of the Streeter Police Department. Last night, at their regular monthly meetings, both District 40 and District 44, I had to approve their versions of, it's the same version, but I had to approve the agreement, so only action by the Streeter City Council.
Chief, do you have any comments, please?
No, I'm just, I'm glad to see him's getting back into this program, I mean, it's more than just law enforcement related, this person that goes into the program, that officer not only serves as a police officer, he serves as a social worker, a counselor, a mentor, even a friend to these students, and it's, it's good to see him be back in the schools, that the students, especially at the normal level, whether they're transitioning to high school, if you can learn, a police officer, somebody to trust, it's not something you have to shy away, you have a problem, you have somebody to go to.
And entertain a motion to approve and authorize an agreement with Streeter Township High School District Number 40 and Streeter Elementary Number 44 for the development, or deployment of a school resource officer. Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clark, call roll, please.
Beady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item four?
Mayor Council, we are coming up on the two-year anniversary of the lease of the Armory to Streeter Incubator LLC, and the two-year anniversary of when the state of Illinois transferred the ownership of that building to the city of Streeter. The Streeter Incubator LLC has pretty much handled most of the operation, they've handled all the operations, all the city has done down there is, we insured against catastrophic loss, we filed the snow and cut the grass, and a couple of other major issues, like some improvements to the boiler, other than that, everything has been handled by Streeter Incubator LLC, they refinished the floors, they fixed the water softener, they made, they made several thousand dollars worth of improvements to the kitchen, so that would meet the, the requirements of the LaSalle County Health Department, they could wifi in, and so, they, you know, dollar a year lease, and they have taken that over and operated it both as a business incubator and as a community center. The only glitch in this system, which this action before you will correct, is that because the Streeter Incubator LLC is a for-profit corporation rather than a not-for-profit corporation, unbeknownst to us, that knocked us out of eligibility for Economic Development Administration funding, which they have a program specifically for incubators like ours here in Streeter, so what this does is it corrects that defect by, instead of leasing this to Streeter Incubator LLC, you will lease it to the Streeter Community Development Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), not-for-profit, who will then turn around and outsource the operations and maintenance of the facility to Streeter Incubator LLC, so this will make no difference in what the average user and tenant at the incubator sees, it'll correct that defect, so that we can now pursue grants with the Economic Development Administration, it'll do one other thing, and that is, it will separate the responsibility for the capital drive, or making other capital improvements, and maybe, and maybe enlisting people who might want to donate to that, that function's separate from the operations and maintenance, and so by having a 501(c)(3) entity that people could donate to in the event that they wanted to help us match grant funding for improving the air conditioning, or improving parking, or whatever other capital improvements that the city would choose to authorize, then that's a separate entity with a tax exempt number from the operations, which is, as the name, as that would indicate, primarily just concerned about operations and maintenance of the, of the incubator. By way of full disclosure, I need to tell you that I have taken a personal interest in getting the Community Development Foundation launched, because I think that our community needs something like this for a lot of other reasons besides just this, because oftentimes there are grants that the granting agency wants the Community Development Foundation for, rather than just dealing with the city, like that happens more and more, and so in the interest of full disclosure, I need to mention to you that I serve as the secretary of the Community Development Foundation, but it's recommended that we do this because it fixes this problem.
And then a motion to approve the leasing agreements for the Streeter Incubator LLC and the Streeter Community Development Foundation, only the Streeter one. Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clark, call roll, please.
Beady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lansford?
Aye.
Item five?
Mayor Council, item five, assuming a simple little item with only five words, has a fairly large introduction, and regrettably, it starts with the fact that the state of Illinois's unfunded pension liability is now close to $150 billion, and there is absolutely no plan in place by any entity to fix that, that's the state's unfunded liability, the collective local government unfunded liability is about $50 billion throughout the state, of all different types of employee groups, of which the largest is, is police and fire. Here in Streeter, we spend 55% already of our property tax levy for pensions, not just police and fire, but, but all, all pension and retirement obligations, there are some cities in Illinois that are spending 100% of their property tax levies, and we spend 31% of our general government expenses just for pensions and insurance and workers' comp, that doesn't even include payroll at all, what these trends indicate is that personnel costs are taking a larger and larger bite by percentage out of the city's annual budget, and on the current trajectory that we have here in Streeter, it will, it will cause us, if not corrected in some way, cause us to reverse the city council's efforts over the last several years to rein in and lower property taxes, this is not any employees' fault, it's simply a situation that has, that has occurred over, over many years, and the state is, and I will say this without reservation, the state is not going to bail us out, because their problems are three times the size of local governments, and so it is my recommendation, in planning for the financial health of the city going forward, that we have to come up with, that we have to do those things that is, that are within our power to keep from going over a financial cliff, and so every time we have a vacant full-time position, we have been and will continue to evaluate whether it can or should be, and it's certainly not true in all cases, but in some cases, it can be outsourced, or transitioned to part-time, or we can enter into joint service agreements with, with other governments to reduce those pension costs, because it will always cost us more to hire full-timers than it is to outsource or use part-timers, or enter into joint service agreements, and so, over the last two years, we've outsourced 911, we've outsourced the chief financial officer, we've outsourced building inspections, we've gone to part-time in City Hall, and it is now time to apply some same thinking to our largest department, which is the Police Department, and so, it's my recommendation that we adopt an ordinance that allows us to hire part-time officers, it will in no way affect anybody who's currently working for us, the changes will happen over a long time by attrition, and it will not in any way reduce the five persons per shift on the Police Department that we currently have in place, so it doesn't affect many, it is one of those corrections that we can make now, because it results in simply putting fewer people and fewer obligations into the long-term pension obligation, which is unfunded, which, this enables us to, to not make it any worse over, over time,